Welcome to tonight's City Council Work Session. We'll go ahead and get started. First item on tonight's agenda will be a discussion on the Clean Vessel Grant Application. I can ask Drew Crays, our Marina Manager, and Ms. Lynn Mazer to come up to the front.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
Or afternoon, whichever it is. Drew has copies for you of the pump that we have selected for a pump out. We've had the Gas Department down looking at what was there and Water Department and it's not... What we had installed is not viable and the price, what it would cost us to get it repaired with the hopes of it staying alive for any reasonable period of time is out of the question at this point in time. So, we are taking advantage of the Alabama Clean Vessel Act. It is a grant. It's a 75-25. And Drew did all sorts of research and found a pump. If you would like to explain it to us, that's the information that we have given you. This is the best price of three different quotes that we've gotten.
The pump is an all-in-one unit. It weighs roughly around 400 pounds. The technology is up-to-date, environmentally sound with all your safety switches, your shut-offs, everything's incorporated as well as your quick disconnects, opposed to the old unit that was existing. The safety feature there is that we can actually, during a storm surge, we can actually disconnect it and pull it out of there if we need to, need be, with a forklift where we'll have it installed. No one will actually be able to come up and operate it themselves. It'll actually be a manned unit that someone from the Marina staff will be there to assist. So, it's not going to be coin-operated. It does come with a remote that either myself or someone else can have that I can shut it off in case of an emergency during a spill, if anything were to happen. With my past history, it's you don't want anyone just coming up and just basically trying to pump out their boat because you don't want the spill action. It's the same concept with U.S. Coast Guard dealing with fueling. You're going to get hit either way.
One of the things to note that with this grant, we are allowed to charge for pump outs, but we're not allowed to charge more than $5.
No, forever?
Forever, until they change it.
You just brought up something interesting that I was going to ask about. Just based on the amount of grants that we've been applying for, what kind of, I guess, what kind of strings are attached to the various grants that we are applying for? I mean, in this case, I don't know, is $5 a reasonable charge for pump out?
Yes.
You know, actually, if you put that with what you pay at your home, which I think is, the sewer bill's around $20-something dollars for around 10,000, 12,000 gallons. But this is, I'm assuming, that's what's going to be my next question, is 65-gallon tank big enough?
You don't have to worry about the tank because what it's doing is it's a suction pump. You're sucking off the boat. That's going, it comes into that holding tank and from there it discharges up to the city's sewer system.
Right then, automatic.
Automatically.
Right then.
Correct.
Okay. So, there's not a holding capacity?
Five dollars is the going rate for pump outs?
Yeah.
Probably is. Is that going to be the going rate in 20 years?
I don't know. I mean, they could change it and advise those of us who have partaken in the grant, but that's where it is right now. And you're right, in the research that I did and Drew knows from his experience and Jack, you know, that $5 is pretty much average.
Of course, we can also tack on that fee for liverboards. We can assess that once we get to it.
And this is part of, you know, moving forward with the Clean Marina status. This falls into line with that.
What do you need from the council?
We need your, we need your permission. We have the application filled out, this particular item. In the end, our contribution will be $2,143.75.
I mean, is this something like you apply, you're pretty sure you're going to be...
We're pretty sure, yeah, we're pretty sure we're going to get it. Every one of the Marinas I spoke with have done this and encouraged us to do it. They said it's the easiest of all the grants out there to take advantage of. So, we're looking for your permission to go ahead and file the paperwork.
Anybody have any issue with that? Anyone else?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We like easy.
While I got you here, what's the status again of the fuel tanks and those pumps?
Richard and I are currently, as of continuing today, getting quotes.
Are there any grant monies available for those pumps?
I have not heard of any, but I will check into that tomorrow if it's out there.
I don't believe so, but...
But I haven't heard of any.
But I'm waiting on two other quotes, so I'll have those hopefully by the end of the week, but...
When do we see the boatyard lease specs being written in?
Soon as the survey, well, they're mostly written, but DeeDee's waiting on the survey to be completed.
Okay. Council, have any questions?
Is the boatyard going to be where 17 Turtles, all the facilities there?
17 Turtles, that space is probably not going to be within the boatyard confined. That will remain separate.
Okay. But for lease?
But for lease.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be actually out for lease once we do get the whole area surveyed. And we'll actually do the boatyard first and then we'll actually do the 17 Turtles building. The 17 Turtles building has to be brought up to code, though.
That means running water in the building. There's water right outside and we've already talked with Richard Peterson and he doesn't see an issue with us getting running water in the building.
Is that dependent on what the use is or...
As well, yes, yeah. The area does need bathrooms as well, and if you want to incorporate it to any kind of a, any working establishment, you're going to have to make it handicap accessible as well.
Well, we were told if you make a major changes to that, you're also going to have to raise that building. So, now, and that's what all, that's why we never did all that because when you start bringing it up to code, you're talking about almost a complete teardown. I see Eric back there shaking his head. Yes, I believe. Is that correct, Eric?
According to the current penal flood maps, that floor is three feet below base flood. So, if you improve that building by 50% or more of the fair market value, you've got to bring the whole building...
We'll keep it under 50%.
You're not going to spend a lot of money.
You can spend $200 on it.
We can make that a cheap building.
We better call that waterfront, prime waterfront property is all I know.
We'll put it on pontoons.
Get the fair market up there.
All right. Any other questions for them? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And to let you know, that is...
Lynn, you're still up.
By $5, it's still 18% more than what we collect.
You got it.
On the rate. So, actually, it seems low, but it's pretty darn good for the amount of gallons that we're taking.
It is.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of boats only have about 20 gallons for their...
Yeah, well, I was going by 65 gallons, same as what that was.
Yeah. I think that's the vacuum tank.
Right.
But it's not going, we'll stay there. Okay, Coral Creek Clubhouse update. Richard and Lynn.
We go from water to grass.
Yeah, I'll kind of give you the high points and let Ms. Mazer fill in any other details. As you know, we did hit a little snag on the design side. The design folks got that worked out. We did get back a review set of plans. We kind of put together a team of Lance and Ms. Mazer and Eric and myself, and we picked them pretty hard because we really wanted to make sure we had a really good clean set of plans and specifications. We're still picking at that a little bit today. I think we're very close to having that ready to go out and hit the streets. The biggest thing is we're trying to work out our advertisement period. The architect is very conscientious that if we, we'd make it real tight during the holiday season, we may inflate the price on ourselves. So, we're looking for some guidance there. But I would love to have bids open before the second meeting in December so that we're at least giving you something to look at and moving forward on that and really trying to hit the ground running with construction and it's been 1st of January. We're still debating on the advertisement period and everything else, but we want to have a mandatory pre-bid meeting, so that's got to be seven days before the bid opening. We just came off a holiday and we get pretty short month in December because we're going to turn right back into the holidays as well. And at least there's consensus that more than likely the second meeting in December will actually be the 21st. So, it's earlier than normal, too. So, that's compressing that window. One of the interesting things, it was a recommendation from the design team, it's kind of new to me, but we have a lot of folks in this trade here, is they're recommending that the contract time, the time to do the work, be part of the bid, meaning that the bidder puts in there, "I can, I can do it in this many days at this price." And the architect feels that's the most competitive way to get the best price and contract time. And it will be interesting because you, as a body, may have to decide that there's a contractor who says, "I can do it in 75 days for $15,000 more" than somebody who says, "It'll take me 120 days for $15,000 less." It'll be interesting how we make a recommendation on that, but it will be a first for me. But I do agree with their concept is that's kind of letting the market dictate the best price at the best contract time. Again, our real goal is construction in the first 90 days of 2018 with a real targeted goal that we have a functioning clubhouse. I think it's March 22nd is the...
The FIF tournament.
The FIF tournament. That's kind of a pressure point there that we're trying to meet. And one of the things, since there was no real cost associated with it in the upfront side, we have included some ad-alternative and one of them that we've added to include what would a competitive contractor replace the windows as opposed to recycling, resealing the windows there, just to see what that price would be. Again, that's an ad-alternative in the actual bid process that won't be part of the base bid. So, I think, I think we're very close. I think by the end of this week, we will have advertisement worked out with purchasing and we'll have a clean set of specification plans to go out the door at that time.
And we're going to get to see a, like a nice, pretty picture of exactly what it is that we're putting out for bid. Is the council going to get a look at that? I know we've had discussions, but I don't know that we've ever seen a rendering, a final rendering of that.
We haven't either. We've gotten drawings.
I mean, we do have elevations that will show you what it looks like, but it is black and white. I mean, it's standard construction plans, but I'll be glad we've got that in PDF format.
I don't know if I saw, I mean, what it looks like.
And in all fairness to Robert, so he's not shocked. We did go through the additional cement patio that you said poured for the concrete. We went through that with Lawrence and the pricing and everything that's out there and we had changed those specs to the E-Pay because all the sub-construction they were going to have to do to support that additional cement was going to be more expensive than extending the E-Pay. So, that's what we're doing. I didn't want you to be shocked and surprised that suddenly there was less cement out there. But this area, well, I'll get these copied and sent out to you. This is all we have at the moment. But this area that was going to be under, under the new roof with the additional cement will now be the E-Pay, so this will all be that. And this connection here will be E-Pay over to the Pro Shop. Otherwise, it is, it's still a cement ramp, ADA ramp, and everything else remains the same, but that was a cost savings.
And it was a time savings because it was an elevated slab, meaning they were going to have to shore it for 28 days and as opposed to framing it and doing a traditional decking. And we already had a composite, meaning there was already going to be concrete and decking. It was a time and cost savings to actually just make that deck be underneath that newer porch overhang. So, I think it's going to be a pretty good cost savings as well as time savings and both of those are of significant value these days.
But I've got this in digital form, so I'll send it out to you tomorrow.
Questions for Richard or Lynn?
Just make sure that pre-bid signing is a requirement to sign those sheets.
We have added that language to all specifications. At the pre-bid I did a week ago, I personally went around and said, "You need to sign this and tell me who you're with." So, lesson learned.
No problem.
Thank you.
So, timeline sounds kind of aggressive in my, in my view, especially with today's construction market, the way things are booming. I think we're going to limit ourselves on the number of people that bid on it if we give them two weeks.
What would you think, if we just go ahead and advertise the whole month of December and shoot for the first meeting in January to have it open by?
I would.
I think that's kind of the architect's opinion, too, is that the more time it's out on the street, the better chances of throwing a wider net, so...
And with the, with the time, are there going to be liquidated damages applied to that as well if they go over their, their amount of time they...
That's, that's how, how it's written, is they specify the construction contract time from, you know, from 10 days from the notice of proceed date from when we execute the contract documents, that when the time that they specified in their bid that we accept, once that time is exceeded, then yes, liquidated damages would apply. But they're, they're the ones proposing the contract time, at least based upon their bid price, so... Which I've, I've never done this before, so this is going to be an interesting exercise for me, so...
It means we will probably miss the FIF tournament. We'll be under reconstruction at that point in time, but it was a nice...
Be nice, but I don't think it's so critical that, you know, hey, they'll see all the renovations going on.
Yep, they will.
Well, and just to understand, the contract documents and specifications are very clear that the facility is going to be remaining in use during the whole construction period, so that contractor has to facilitate. Now, there may be a doorway that's closed off or, you know, and some things of that nature, but it is, the object of the exercise is that the facility remains open and in function during the construction period.
And I think FIF likes the price of the course for their tournaments.
It's hard to beat.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, discussion for full-time in-house attorney, Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
You or anyone else you'd like to assign to speak to that?
Jeff, if you can put the first slide of the presentation up. And I'm a horse, but I feel fine. I actually have a voice and I haven't had one for three days. It wasn't from the Auburn gang. Okay. Can y'all see that? I put this together about an hour ago, so otherwise I would have printed. What I did is I put together what we paid the city attorney in fiscal 2017.
Mayor...
Yeah, yeah. I think that would be better.
Would you in the audience mind if we turn this to here?
Okay. So, the city attorney in fiscal 2017 was $117,444. The planning portion of Jones Walker, which was Ken Watson, was $61,717. And when I asked Matt to estimate what the percentage of time he spent on municipal part of, you know, his calls, he said about 10%. So, the total that we paid for municipal attorney or a city attorney was $204,209. I'd say on the high end, a full-time in-house attorney would be, on the high end, $115, but I'm putting worst-case scenario in here, with benefits, the total pay would be about $120,000. So, a savings of $83,000, almost $84,000. I did have Leslie call some other municipalities and get some ranges from them for how much they pay full-time in-house attorney. This is somebody that would be, you know, well-versed in municipal government from planning to, you know, all the specialties that a municipal attorney would do. But Madison County, I mean Madison, their mid-range for an attorney is 90 and then their upper range is 120. Tuscaloosa is between 84 and 110. Opelika, they actually just have, they have an attorney 29 hours a week on salary for 74. I do think that we'll use 40 hours a week. Huntsville is between 67.2 and 104, just to give you some, some ideas. But I do think, you know, basically not going with a full-time attorney at this point and where we are with the city, you know, I said worst-case scenario because I did an upper-end salary, but we could be paying over $100,000 more here by not doing that. It's definitely, we're at that tipping point now where having an in-house attorney, when you own all of your utilities, you're fastest-growing city in the state, so you're definitely going to be using somebody for planning a great deal. You know, just having full access all the time is, would be a huge advantage to the city right now and obviously a huge savings, too.
May I ask you a few questions, Mayor Wilson? So, the, as you envisioned it, the full-time in-house attorney would take on all of the duties currently undertaken by the attorney that's supporting the planning commission? So, all of that expense would go away?
Well, I think just like you have an outside counsel, I mean, you're going to have situations where you probably need to have an attorney in addition to the city, but...
Is it fair to say, would they take the lion's share of that?
Yes, absolutely.
And then, kind of follow on that same line item on the planning, that 60, roughly $62,000 for fiscal 2017, are those typical charges? I mean, I'd like to know what they were for prior years, if there was...
I'm not sure if Jill's...
And is that related to, I guess, you know, is that related to all the moratorium and, you know, all the changes that's going through planning and zoning? I mean, is that, is that a typical year?
I didn't look up prior years. I didn't do that, but I did look up...
Do you have that, Jill? Detailed billing?
Yeah, we had an attorney specific for planning.
Right.
I will say that right now, you know, I don't know if it's going to be more or less, but we are abiding by the rules. We're not bending a little for this person here and making up different, they're all the same right now. So, we're actually using, planning potentially more right now than ever because it doesn't matter who you are, you're treated the same. I think that's going to be, you know, once you get over that hump and everybody understands, all the developers understand that nobody's being singled out, we're following the laws that we've always had on our books. They're just black and white. I think that potentially that should go down, but this is just looking at last year.
So, that was one question. And the municipal, Matt had estimated that the municipal help was only 10% of...
I think it's very, very conservative.
So, it could be less than 10%?
Oh, I think it's probably more.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I think probably as well.
Yeah, I was just trying to, I mean, I asked him and that's what he said, so...
And so, how much of that would go away? So, how much of that would go away? And then, are you saying that we don't need a city attorney on retainer? This would replace it?
No, you, you still have your outside counsel for, but I do think an in-house attorney would probably take over a lot of these suits.
I guess, so, when you're saving, show the savings, if you show the second line, you still have to have city attorney. You're still going to have those expenses.
No, the city attorney is that. I'm just saying, that's, that's just showing what we're paying now and the bottom, the full-time in-house attorney is what you would pay to cover those things. And I do think...
So, you're saying it would supplant the city attorney then?
No, because I said 10%. I'm sorry. The full-time city attorney would replace those expenses on top, the first four, I mean, one, two, three, under the, let me put my glasses on.
So, it would replace the city attorney? Yeah, I think when you say city attorney, you're talking about Matt. He's talking about Tuck.
Right. You're getting a full-time city attorney, Tuck retiring into this year, so you're not going to go with a part-time city attorney. If we look at a full-time city attorney, this is what, what I think we would save minimum. I think we're going to end up saving more than that because, you know, there's a lot of duplication right now and I don't think that's necessary. I really don't.
I guess the way I see it, though, I would, that second summary that adds to 120, I think that you're still going to have planning. I don't know what that number is. Municipal help, you're probably still going to be able to have someone that's going to help you out in that. And then, benefits only being 5,000.
That's the whole package.
Yeah, you have social security, it probably should be more like 40% of the salary added in that. Anybody else know that number?
That's not correct.
But what about the fact that I think if you were to bring in a full-time in-house attorney, that you'd need some admin help for that position?
No, because he's full-time.
Yeah, but I mean...
He or she is full-time.
But still, going...
Yeah, and I've, and Mayor, you and I have had this discussion multiple times and we obviously disagree. And my, but, but just looking, and I'm not, I don't want to advocate one side or the other, but just looking at these numbers from a, from someone who does this every day, I can tell you there are a couple of things that are missing off that list that probably will increase what it would cost to have an in-house attorney. First off, the city would be responsible for paying his malpractice insurance because if he's a full-time employee of the city, he would supply his own, that'd be something that the employer would take care of. So, that should be up there.
We'll find out that expense.
He's going to need access or her, he or she is going to need access to some sort of legal library, whether that's us buying him a paper library, which is not feasible, but more, more than likely paying for he or she to have access to one of the internet databases, whether that's Westlaw or Nexus. And that's, that's pretty expensive, whether it's $1,000 or $2,000 a month, depending on how much you use it. So, that's, that's anywhere from a, you know, $5,000 to $20,000 a year expense. And then, just generally speaking, from what I know, there's going to be some sort of, and I think that's what you were talking about, Jimmy, is some sort of administrative help, whether that's a...
Assistant or...
...legal or something because, you know, there's a lot that goes into the work that they do. They will need some sort of assistance, someone, someone else with some legal competence to be able to help them prepare documents and to help them do that sort of thing. So, when you add that up, that really, that quickly eats away that 83, you know, and from, just from my standpoint, from having, from dealing with in-house attorneys on a lot of things, you know, they, they can be very competent in sort of a lot of different things, but you're not ever going to get that, that specialization and that real expertise on any issue. You know, they're not going to be able to do the planning like Ken Watson does it, you know, because, because if you think of all the outside things that go into what the city attorney does, you have to have somebody go to every planning and zoning meeting. You have to have someone attend every city council meeting. You have to have someone attend court every Wednesday. I mean, that's a lot of outside work, but when you add those up, if they're getting comp time, then they're not going to be in the office of the city very often because there's so much that occurs after hours.
It's a salary position.
Yeah, well, then that, well, then you're talking about having them work 60, 70 hours a week and you're going to be hard-pressed to find somebody else. Still going to have a prosecutor in court. Yeah. I mean, I'm just saying, there's a lot...
This is prosecutor, too. I'm just saying, this is, I think this is a conservative amount, like I said. This does not include the fact that right now, we don't have full-time access.
Right.
Okay.
I'm disagreeing with that.
We do have admin within the city. In fact, the utilities pays a portion of the city admin so they can run. I mean, it's, I don't think we look at this and come up with a few things and say, "Oh, we just can't do it," when this is just the beginning. And we don't have full-time access. We're not getting, you know, I wasn't going to go into great detail about the, the things that have happened over the last years due to not having a full-time attorney, but I can do that. But it is, it's costing us. The liability of not having that is costing us dearly.
Are there any other cities and municipalities in Baldwin County that have a full-time attorney?
I don't know. I mean, this was, I had Leslie do this today. I don't know if she's here, but, you know, she had a lot of phone call, hell, that didn't get them reported back. It was something I thought of at the end, but, you know, something that you, we look at, too. It's not even population. We have a $60 million, over a $60 million budget. We own all of the utilities. I mean, the attorney being there, looking at everything and being a part of, we're only right now engaging the city attorney when we have a question. Making this person a part of looking at all documentation and all of these things is, I mean, we're not doing that right now. And like I said, the cost, what it's costing us, I promise you, that's not in those figures right now.
Questions, council? Comments?
I mean, I can see that there may be some intangible benefit that you just can't quantify here. here, I just, I think that looking at the numbers as they're presented right now, I feel like the, the legal fees are higher this year than they have been in typical years, I think the more...
It's been lower than typical years. I showed that in the presentation.
They're substantially higher. I, I mean, I've, I've looked at the legal fees, they're like a hundred, two-hundred thousand dollars higher than last year and the year before.
Where are you getting these figures?
From a rundown of the legal fees that we paid this year?
I have that in my presentation, and I have it in the budget. We have lower legal fees than we've had in years past, significantly lower.
I don't think that's the case.
When you say legal fees, what are you referring to when you say legal fees?
The, well, I'm just looking at the whole picture, because, right now, Jones Walker is doing a lot of the municipal work right now, so, I'm doing a bigger portion. I mean, they're talking to each other all the time, I mean, it's just, and, and when you say that these attorneys might not have the expertise in certain fields, I mean, that's just not true. These attorneys, these city attorneys that are full-time, I mean, they have expertise in planning, and, I mean, you interview them, you, you set, you know, the job description, you interview them, and you pick the best person. It's definitely doable. But, I think, even if you looked at all of this, and we ended up spending the same, what you're gaining is access, and you're protecting the city more by having that full-time access. You're absolutely not gonna spend more. I feel very confident that we will save that amount of money next year, if we hire a full-time attorney.
Any other questions or comments? Counsel? All right. Thank you, Mayor. Next is a discussion on business licenses, issuance fees, penalties, and interest. Jennifer?
Hello. So, in 2006, the state of Alabama had an act for the Municipal Business License Reform Act, and it streamlined all the municipalities in Alabama on what type of application you were using, your, some of the fees and interest rate, or penalties and interest. And so, I was wondering if we could possibly get in line with the state code of Alabama on our code and change the issuance fee amount to coincide with what they use, or what they say we can use, as well as the interest and penalty along with that.
To maximum allowed, or just what, is there a suggestion? I mean, is it different for different municipalities?
Every five years, the Alabama Department of Revenue will put out a suggestion on, you can go up to this amount, and then it's the municipality's decision on whether or not to keep it where it is, or use that amount, or put it somewhere in between.
When was the last time they were changed?
The last time it was changed in the City of Fairhope was in the last time the Business License Code was initiated, which was in 2005. It's been five dollars.
It's still five dollars?
It's still five dollars.
And what is it, what are they recommending now?
The state, the state says the maximum amount would be twelve dollars per license. And then, the other, the interest right now, if you are delinquent after January thirty-first, our interest rate is fifteen percent. The state allows that if you're delinquent thirty days after that, which would be the end of February, that it would be an additional fifteen percent, so we would be at thirty percent after February. Right now, we're only doing the fifteen percent after January thirty-first and one percent per month after that.
So, a lump sum fifteen percent, and then a one percent monthly, or twelve percent per annum? And their fifteen percent would be fifteen percent per annum?
Fifteen percent, and then thirty percent after February, and then you can also charge a one percent interest rate as well.
And they call banks predatory lenders? What's the, okay, you also said penalties and interest, so that was the penalty part of it? All right, questions for Jennifer?
How much money are we talking about per year that this would generate or increase?
The license fee, we figured was around twenty-three thousand dollars. It's not, and I didn't figure the percentage on the late penalties, that's just a give or take. I mean, if everybody pays theirs before January thirty-first, there would be none. If everybody pays them after February third, then you're looking at thirty percent per license fee.
So, we're doing about twenty, we're doing about twenty thousand a year right now, and this would be an extra twenty-three, or it would take it up to twenty-three?
It would be an additional twenty-three thousand dollars. Based off, I think I averaged it at like thirty-seven hundred licenses a year.
So, a hundred and forty percent of what it is right now.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like a small dollar amount, I just wanna make sure whatever we do is consistent with being proactively business-friendly community.
Yeah. The hundred and forty percent sounds like a massive increase, but seven dollars...
We've gone from five dollars, right, exactly.
You're going from five to twelve, y'all...
Five to twelve's not a very big deal, but...
I don't have a problem with the state's rec, I just started, and I don't have a problem with the state's recommendation of twelve dollars, and I don't have a problem with fifteen percent when you're thirty days late, but I have another, I have a little bit of a problem with another...
With the second fifteen percent?
The second fifteen percent.
I tell you.
That sounds a little harsh, I mean, some people that are trying to buy, and will never catch up, and, you know, you know, if they can't pay that first fifteen percent, good chance they're never gonna pay that second fifteen percent, and may never see any of it. Probably so, so few people affected by that, that just seems a little... Anybody else have an opinion on that?
My question is, how many part-time business licenses? When I say part-time, you may not get a license every year, do the fact you're not doing work in Fairhope every year?
That's only for the contractors.
Right. Does this, would this affect them also? Basically, I'm in that category.
It would still be, you would still pay, you would pay your issuance fee, whether it would be five dollars or twelve dollars, based on whether or not you got it in January...
I'm always sure the penalties in the...
Well, yeah. No, we don't charge contractors penalties and interest, because we don't require them to obtain a business license until they're actually working in Fairhope.
Right.
So, say, as a contractor would come in in, you know, June of this year, or this year, and needed a business license, they wouldn't be charged any penalty and interest, because they didn't have, that initiated, that business initiated was not until then.
No problem.
So, on the penalties and interest, is that only on the license fee, or is it that business privilege tax that's also based on gross revenues?
It's just your license fee that it's based off.
Yeah, the business privilege would be the state.
Yeah, if you had a license fee of a hundred dollars, you would be paying, what, a hundred and thirty dollars if you were after February thirtieth, if you were after January first, it'd be a hundred and fifteen dollars.
Yeah, so you do pay more than that issuance fee, then? It's on the entire license, not just, that's what it's asking, the total cost of the license, not just the issuance fee.
Correct.
Yeah, which is a formula based on your revenue, right?
Correct, and your goal is to get your licenses paid or postmarked by January thirty-first. That's the incentive of paying on time.
Can we give her some recommendations, so if anybody wants to change it, we could get that on the agenda? What about, okay, what about the fee, five dollars to twelve dollars?
I think that's fine, probably. I just, I think that maybe that second fifteen percent, I'd maybe scratch that and just go with the fifteen percent initial.
I'd say fifteen percent and then one percent per month. That's a twelve percent per year, that's...
If they take that long, right.
Well, it ends up being a total of twenty-five percent, because the first month's fifteen percent, and then you get, well, it's eleven months.
Yeah.
So, that you can add.
You go back to that first month to add that, okay.
So, we would just leave the penalties and interest as it is currently, fifteen percent after January, and then one percent after, and then change the license fee to...
Right, is that what I'm hearing?
I got no problem with that, because basically, the argument would be, I'm late paying my business fee, my business license, but I know I'm supposed to get it, but I'm late, and, you know, I really think this is unfair, it's like, hey, man, like everything else, you got to pay it. So, it's not, to me, it's not, if you pay it, you don't have to worry about anything.
Correct.
And so, I don't think there's anything unreasonable about it, to be quite honest with you.
All right. Okay, good, Jennifer?
Sure.
You got direction?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Committee updates? Councilman Robinson?
I don't have any reports this time.
Okay. Councilman Boone?
None to report, thank you.
Councilman Brown?
Yes, the bike ped, I want to remind everybody that Friday is Bike to School Day to Fairhope Elementary School, and they have a contest for decorating yourself or, and/or your bike, and the Fairhope store will be the judge at school, and will give prizes to those that are best and most decorated. The Financial Advisory Committee is going to start working on a strategic plan for funding opportunities for capital improvement needs for the city. That's it.
Okay. Councilman Conyers?
All right, the Historic Preservation Committee, next meeting is Thursday, December seventh, at nine-thirty a.m. at the Fairhope History Museum. We're still having a little bit of trouble obtaining a quorum for those. Next, Environmental Advisory Board, that meeting is scheduled for Friday, December eighth, at three p.m. in the Del Champs Room, and the Library Board, Monday, December eighteenth, at five p.m. at the library, and they just wanted me to remind everyone that the Chocolate and Champagne party they have in January has tickets going on sale December eleventh.
When is that? When's the function?
I don't know the exact date of the function, I just know the tickets are on sale December eleventh. I tried to find that online, but it is in January, in late January.
That should be in that late January.
That's it.
Okay. The Fairhope Airport Authority, some members met with some staffers with the city and the mayor and Auburn University, so I'm gonna ask the mayor, or Sherry Lee, to give an update on that meeting, if you don't mind.
I reached out to Auburn, I guess it was October of last year, just to talk to them about the schools that we would love for, to have a partnership with them down here. This is just a conversation, but definitely architecture, engineering, planning, agriculture, really not even understanding how big, you know, aviation was at Auburn. I really didn't even have that on my list. But, we've met with them, I don't know, three times, and just kept that conversation going, and then Sherry Lee started talking about aviation, and I'm like, you know, that's, that would be obviously a perfect fit, so...
Yeah, I'll give credit where credit's due to Wayne, who brought it up to me, actually, and I did the same thing.
It's not in my realm.
Yeah, no, we started talking about, they have their new aviation center that's launching, and so we invited the new director, I've been communicating with the head of Government Affairs there, so their director and their dean came down and talked with us, and, like you said, Jack, I think you were out of town, but a group got together with us and just, I mean, it really was a preliminary discussion about what could be, and if, if this was, if we're all in agreement with starting some sort of seeding a pipeline. We already have the Aviation Academy there at the airport, so you have kids that can go through the two-year school, then they could roll into the four-year, and then potentially graduate from that program into, I mean, I think they said the minimum is an eighty-thousand dollar a year job. So, it sounded like a great opportunity for, something for us to have. I don't know that they'd build a structure or anything right out of the gate, but I think the opportunity's there for a lot of different partnerships at the airport.
They also mentioned that, you know, not, not every aviation, I guess, field has to have a, a four-year college. There's so many jobs that are needed, and aviation alone, in ten years, seventy percent of the workforce will be retiring, which is significant, and that's because they were kinda all hired at once when the...
When Reagan administration, right, let them go.
So, you know, the need for pilots is, it just, I would say, it's critical, and really getting girls involved in that, and really interested in the schools, in our high school, before they even graduate high school, and, and giving them programs that, you know, hopefully would pique their interest, would be important.
So...
So, did, I mean, you know, just overall, I mean, very preliminary, was it a positive?
Extremely positive.
I mean, are follow-ups being scheduled?
We're gonna talk sometime this week, I'll speak with CJ Hensy and Touchbase, and just see what their ideas were. I mean, we, we really wanted everyone to get the information, and for them to go back and kinda gauge the appetite they have for partnering with us, but they were really, really positive and excited, so I would be shocked if something didn't come of it, but, you know, there are a lot of people we need to bring to the table to make sure that everyone's on board, but I think it's a great opportunity for, you know, our young people, I mean, I went home and talked to my kids about it, I think it's, it's a great opportunity, it's something we could have right here in Fairhope, and with all the jobs in Mobile and potential jobs that we could have at the airport moving forward.
And Gulf Shores, when they started engaging with Auburn, it took four years to get to the point where they had the groundbreaking, I mean, I would love to be able to do something before then, but, you know, it was just, it's just the initial conversation.
When you look at the vocational jobs, you know, the aviation school that's there now is preparing some people to go into aviation, shipbuilding type of jobs, but if you go into an aviation school, a four-year program, degree program, you know, you have to have a lot of classes, because, you know, those students are not just taking aviation courses, they're taking math, and they're taking some, I could tell you from, very few electives, but you do have to take your math and English and this and that, and you, so you basically have to have a college campus of sorts, and have a student population to support all those professors.
And we talked about that, and so we, we tried to talk about what is possible now, you know, what they could do, and we understand, I mean, we wouldn't have, we don't have the ground laid to support a four-year Auburn, you know...
And they don't wanna take away from their school.
Right.
It's really just figuring out maybe what that gap measure is, because of the huge need.
So, I'm very positive.
Are they working with the two-year college systems as well, and, you know, the big buzz that's been going through the two-year college system, and I would think that Auburn, you know, they want those upperclassmen as well to be prepared to go into those occupations, so hopefully they're working with the two-year college system.
Yes.
They are, and, and they, I believe they've already had conversations with Coastal, but that would be the next step in my mind, is for them to come back and for us to have more conversations with our two-year colleges. Aviation Academy was closed, unfortunately, the day they came, so the director didn't get to meet with them, but I get the feeling they really wanna come back, and I think, like most people that come here from elsewhere, they wanna come back toward a weekend, so they can actually spend time in Fairhope, so the beauty of living in Fairhope, people like to come. So, I think it went very well, it was a really positive meeting and exciting.
All right, well, we'll close committee updates and go right into department head updates, and Sherry Lee, since you're up here, if you wanna start off?
Yeah, I was gonna have Wayne join me, 'cause we have a little bit of an update. Looking for sanitizer for the room and control, 'cause...
Well, I didn't use that one.
You didn't use this one? Okay, good.
Just had one... One's on.
So, the PL grant, we had, we had this whole community process for the pedestrian safety and wayfinding, this was the grant that came through the MPO that this council approved, and Mayor, you came, Kevin and Robert, you also came, so we had a steering committee, you can see the members on this slide who were part of that steering committee, but they represented essentially our downtown business association, our, our leadership here, city council, mayor, some staff, and I'm saying this for people that may not be able to see it, director of BRATS, the director of the Metropolitan Planning Organization, and the president of the Downtown Fairhope Business Association. So, that was the steering committee, but we had other stakeholder meetings in addition to this. For this PL grant, it paid for experts to come and help us with this process, and Christian Preuys, who is, I say he's local, he's got an office here, but an office in Ocean Springs, who does urban planning, and he specializes in some wayfinding and some, some other areas which are a perfect fit for this project. But Christian also subcontracted Rick Hall, and Rick Hall is a nationally renowned traffic engineer... some other areas which are a perfect fit for this project. But Christian also subcontracted Rick Hall, and Rick Hall is a nationally renowned traffic engineer and planner who worked on the walkability plan for Seaside. And Wayne, you know Rick.
Yeah, he's probably the leading transportation engineer when it comes to new urbanism projects like Rosemary Seaside, things like that, you know. He's very well-versed in traffic calming devices, and also pedestrian safety and things of that nature. It was very enlightening to hear him talk and just walk around him, just casually pointing out things that you could do that were actually very cheap things to do to improve the downtown area from the standpoint of walkability and safety and those kind of things. He was a very, very, very knowledgeable expert.
That's great to have him here, and for, for someone who doesn't know Fairhope, to come in and hear what they appreciate about Fairhope, what we organically already have, and where we can make improvements. Where am I supposed to point this? There we go. So I just wanted to point out that this was a follow-on to the study that was also done, I think, through a PL grant before we were here, by Dan Burton. So that was more focused on parking and active transportation, but this definitely played on, was a follow-on to that study, and complemented it, and helped us move forward. So this is just a picture of some of the, the process that we did. We held most of our meetings at the museum upstairs, which was really nice. This is the area that we focused on. Wayne, do you want to touch on that?
Yeah, and I think the reason why we focused on this, this is sort of a, the center of this circle is Fairhope Avenue and section. That's sort of the center of downtown. And this is a, the first ring is a quarter-mile radius, which is sort of the walkability standard. The quarter mile's a five-minute walk, which most people would have no problem walking. The little, the further out one is, is a half-mile radius. And so we really focus on the walkability standpoint, since that's the most walkable area of town. And that is where most of this work was done, and most of the focus was.
I'm laughing because I made the comment, apparently it's further than a quarter mile from the parking garage to any store in town.
Right.
And nobody wants to make that walk.
That's right. If we're going to touch on that-
They'd walk everywhere else.
That's right.
I find that interesting.
Yeah, and you'll see a recommendation later that actually it's directly a result of that feeling. These are just some analysis and recommendations that they made, so these are, these are a list of things they looked at. The Town and Gown Committee was really something that they recommended that we establish in this town to figure out how we can further our relationships with our educational institutions here. And actually Casey Gay with the chamber kind of raised her hand and said that the chamber would launch that for us, so we would work together with them to start that committee.
And also to help look at the parking situation, because I know that's a big, a big issue for some people, and maybe build those relationships and lines of communication to, so we can maybe better address the parking, especially towards the campuses.
And there are probably a lot of benefits to our relationships with the, those institutions that we're not really exploring, that we, we can. And you can see some areas, the Johnson and Bancroft, obviously, like Wayne said, that's really hits on the parking issues. And then our parking concerns, our tiers, whether to be paid or not paid, paid, and I don't know if you all were there for that discussion, but that was definitely the most heated discussion we had. It was very interesting. Loading zones, this was something that came up quite a bit about loading. I think Alex was the one that talked about this, people with lots of children, places to just unload handicapped people, or children, or, you know, goods that you're dropping off.
I can mention real quick, on the top, the picture on the top there, that's, that's Johnson Street. You've got a beautiful building at the terminus of that street, called a Terminal Vista, but the street itself is not very pleasing, I guess. It looks like a typical street. And there's some things that they noted that you could do to make that a better visual, you know, better visual presence there on that street, and also maybe can get some more parking out of that street as well. Some of the things we're looking at, too, is beautification as well as pedestrian safety.
And we do have a picture of that, too. But, and walkability and wayfinding were the last things we talked about, and I'll just briefly go through. You can see there's a legend down here that talks, these are all the areas we looked at, and the different things we looked at in each of the areas. Keep going forward. So a couple of things that came up, I mean, and this doesn't mean these are things that we're necessarily doing, but these were recommendations that came out of it. Things like a safety strip down Fairhope Avenue, it's something that's done in a lot of different places. This would be the area you see where the delivery truck is parked in the middle, and you've got the school bus going by. They said this alleviates people using that middle lane to pass people on the left, and having cobbles or something down the middle of the lane is a traffic calming.
Yes, traffic calming, but you can still park there if necessary. If you need to have a delivery, you can still park there, but it wouldn't be, to drive over it with a vehicle, with a car, would be not as pleasant because of the nature of the cobblestones, those kind of things.
Right.
And also a good traffic calming device as well to slow traffic down naturally.
A couple of locations for these rapid rectangular flashing beacons, and we went through all the different types of things that are out there on the market, and what is successful and what is not. So they've done, Rick, Rick's group's done a lot of studies on all these devices, what works best, and so these recommendations are based on those studies.
And these are relatively cheap. I think Richard mentioned the cost for those.
For a full standalone W M like that, you're around $7,500.
So some, you know, relatively, not inexpensive, but relatively cheap when you start to talk about road structures and things like that.
Cheap as opposed to hitting, hitting someone.
We'd get two years to go for a business license.
So, and then Wayne, do you want to touch on real quick the expansion of the CBD and how that impacts Fairhope?
Yeah, and this was a discussion that we had with Rick in some of our meetings, the, on the Phase 1 on the right there, that is the Portico site plan. As you notice what they have right now, they have park, you have to pull off the road, another little side street next to the road with parking in front of it. What he had suggested is, is moving that building closer and using the on-street parking on the right-of-way. I think that will do a couple of things. One, in conjunction with some of the other traffic calming measures further up Fairhope Avenue, this would also tend to slow down traffic, you know, from a, from a natural standpoint, rather than having a police presence out there. And so providing on-street parking with the, with the safety strip in the middle would, again, provide a lot more parking in the area, but also slow down traffic.
Here's your Terminal Vista. I just love that phrase.
Yeah, and I think this building was designed by Matt Walcott and his, his group, and it's a beautiful building at the end of a street that's a pretty average-looking street. And what they had suggested is, is doing some enhancements to that street, and it could look similar to this. Even some of the buildings, you know, you've got blank walls, you'd like to see, you know, find creative ways to work with the property owners to make that a little more visually attractive. I think that does a couple of things. It looks better, but also when a street looks better, you invite more investment in that, in those buildings and in those areas, too, to get, get a higher and best use of that property adjacent to the street.
And this is an opportunity to, to speak with business owners, property owners, to say, hey, have you ever considered maybe adding on to this, or having a second story, or, you know, we really need more office space, or, so it provides that opportunity, too, and for them to open up. I mean, they really touched on, people are working on the other side of that solid wall. It's not up, may not be the most conducive. They really loved Bancroft. They said it was about the most schizophrenic street they had ever seen. So there's a lot going on there, and they, they recommended that we improve the cross-sections on Bancroft, and they generated some ideas out of that, too. And this was a big one, veterans in section. We did ask them to look at that area, because we had the police department involved in this process as well, and they talked about, I think we've had 19 serious collisions in the last year there, and one death from one of those collisions. So all of the accidents are pretty severe at that intersection, so they recommended a roundabout of sorts. And I think that's been recommended before, right? Years ago? I think it came up.
And the roundabout also acts as a traffic calming device as well.
Of course. So that was their recommendation. And then, leading down to the municipal pier, they recommended that we put in a three-way stop and make these conditions more walkable down to the pier, so people downtown are-
Before I forget, I've had a guy call me and tell me they want the mirror back up there so you can see the traffic.
Okay.
I've been meaning to bring that up for a couple of months. They'll be happy. I hope you're watching tonight. I brought up the mirror.
There you go. Mirror brought up. It's, we'll, we'll put it in the recommendations. So the wayfinding, three types of wayfinding, vehicular, pedestrian, directional, and informational. So we talked about all three, went through a big process with that, too, getting recommendations from people from all walks of life, business, community. Some of you were involved, and obviously their recommendations, and this is where they located the best use for all of those different types of signage throughout the city. And then we came out with a plan, basically, so some recommendations for projects that we could do, short range within one to two years, two to four years, and four to eight years. And then Richard Johnson said we can do all of these within, did you say, three years?
Three to four.
So we could talk about them. So Richard and I have already started discussing several of these, and what funding's available, and what we could do in-house, and just looking at opportunities to execute some of these projects. I mean, we have a little bit more to do with this, and needs to go, I think, before the Planning Commission for discussion. And we'd probably have some more internal discussions as well, but I just wanted you all to see.
Yeah, this, this is just a snapshot of the, of the whole, whole plan they did for us. We just put down a key, a few key slides.
Yeah.
Sure.
That's it.
We'll look forward to that.
Thank you.
Mr. Peterson, do you have?
I hope everybody had a good Thanksgiving. I know if you haven't, we're going to football.
Hope you did as well.
I did, and I did.
I did, too.
Same.
Sure we did, too.
Nor you.
Nor you.
I have got some issues coming up at the Planning Commission that I think, that I'd like for y'all to be aware of. The, and what, these are excerpts. One is the excerpt from the subdivision regulations regarding upsizing. And upsizing would be involved with taking a small development that has undeveloped property around it, and trying to take advantage of a situation where we can potentially serve sewer to a bigger area than what the original development would want to have served to it because of the size. And, and one particular development that's being proposed on County Road 13, just north of Fairhope Avenue, fits kind of what this would require. And the, when you go in, on Fairhope Avenue East, before you get to the roundabout, there's a definite drainage way that comes through there. And, and that drainage way extends all the way up to Gaper Extension, and everything on either side of that would be, would be able to be served by a major lift station located potentially at Fairhope Avenue, assuming that we can make the arrangement with the property owners and do the upsizing. So the upsizing would require the developer to put in, or to pay for what the cost of the infrastructure to serve his development. And then the upsizing would require Fairhope just to make up the difference, so that we would collect that through, and I've submitted some connection fee and access fee-type payments that would amend the ordinance for connection fees. And I don't, I didn't provide that part to you, but I think it was part of the budget presentation for connection fee increases. Now that the access fee part of that may be something I've added since I've last sent it to you, but I'll forward everybody a copy of what the latest proposal would be for that, just in trying to digest what it takes to get the, the infrastructure improvements paid for, you know, without costing the other people who are able to connect to the system without our participation, and be equal in terms of what's fair to everybody that is served by sewer. And it'd be like anything else, that if you buy a piece of property that doesn't have sewer necessarily available to it, well, theoretically you would think you'd pay less money for that, and to have an expectation that sewer should be there, that you should be able to use a, a smaller line that may not be adequate for the entire area around you. I mean, if, if you were to do an assessment project to serve that, you'd pay for that assessment work anyway. So, and I think this is basically what we're trying to do, is, is put some money up front that would be the equivalent of an overall assessment, if everybody was on the same page as all the surrounding property owners wanting to get all that done at one time. But sometimes it doesn't work that way. So I'm, I'm looking to be able to work out an arrangement where we can upgrade, put the lift station in there, and provide the gravity system, pointing in the directions of all the land that's not currently developed, we'll be able to take advantage of when they pay this access fee for that infrastructure. And two council meetings ago, I talked to you about the, the difference between the, the, the design criteria, which basically is to provide gravity sewer in, in terms of water and sewer specs. There's some provisions for locations of fire hydrants, and there's provisions for, for fire flows and things like that in the design criteria part. And then there's also technical specifications, and, and I'm trying to work with the apartment, our complex on South Section, so that the design specifications, we can accept more than just one type of a lift station, you know, the, and we talked about this, whether we want the Cadillac or the Chevrolet, or, you know, and there are different types of equipment that are available, and as technology continues to evolve, you know, those things can change from time to time. For instance, we could use floats to, tail pumps to come on. Now we can use ultrasonic devices or transducer devices that can give you any level of the water in the wet well at any one time. So when you start to use these SCADA systems, and you can start monitoring where the water is in the wet well, using the transducer or the ultrasonic device, you can tell exactly where the water is. You don't, you don't, you don't know that it's just on the, the lead pump float is on. You don't know that that's the only thing you have on. You know that that water is at a point where the alarm float would have been on, or it may be way the hell up at the top of the wet well. So you'll know that with the ultrasonic or the transducers. But those are the types of technologies that have evolved over time, that we need to be able to adjust the technical side of the specifications without necessarily changing the design criteria that the Planning Commission would adopt. So this resolution kind of describes the two differences, and it's asking the Planning Commission to adopt this resolution so that they maintain the, the design criteria aspect of what we allow. And, but they allow the technical staff to change the specifications as they deem appropriate. And just so you know, the, the, the moratorium was lifted, and there's been four subdivisions that have been submitted that, that, you know, we've debated back and forth with some of the developers' consultants about why gravity systems can't comply to the standard, and, and there's arguments on both sides of all this. But basically, I'm trying to make sure we understand that we do have standards, and that the gravity systems are what we think is appropriate. And it's not what we think necessarily be appropriate for the developer, and it's not necessarily what we think may be appropriate for the utility. It is what we think is appropriate for the future property owners who are going to be served by this infrastructure, no different than the width of the street would be, or no different than the building setback would be, or no different than anything else is within the standards of the subdivision regulations. And I think it's important to realize that we established these standards, and those standards are an expectation that people should be able to expect and enjoy once they buy a house from moving and locating here from who knows where they may be from. But there's been a pattern of a lot of grinder pumps being put in on low-pressure systems because it is easy, but it doesn't meet the standard necessarily, and I'm trying to work to make sure we, we commit ourselves to recognizing that standard and, and holding these people accountable to, you know, to put those in when they are absolutely required. So, and you may have heard from people already, you're part, you know, there's, and you're welcome to come to the Planning Commission meeting next Monday. I'm sure it'll be discussed.
Go on, thank you very much, because we do want to make sure that what's developed is good for the citizens. And if, as a city, we can do that, it's important. I fully support it.
I guess what I was talking to Clark about was whether or not the Planning Commission has an authorization to authorize you, the Director of Operations, to do certain things, or whether it's-
Well, I don't know that, but Ken Watson prepared all this, so I'm, we talked about an in-house attorney versus attorneys that we use, and I'm assuming that he's researched enough to understand that.
Well-
But I don't know. And that's why I'm bringing this to everybody.
I don't know that I've seen our Planning Commission adopt resolutions. It looks like some type of ordinance to me. I would, I would probably want to, could you say it, run it by the attorney-
Certainly. Oh, certainly.
-see if that's proper course of action.
And that's what I think we have done, but here again- And that's what I think we have done, but here again, and, you know, for every lawsuit I've ever known, Jay, and you may correct me if I'm, but there's always one attorney that's wrong, right?
Well, I kind of am surprised that this didn't go directly to the city attorney, because that's, that's what they do, Ken Watson. And I'll just go ahead and say, now, one of the reasons we have attorney's fees that are so high is they're being asked to do things. We were told that Jones Walker was to be our litigator, and here we are asking them questions, you know, is Ken our attorney that sits on the, you know?
He's at every planning commission meeting, I know that.
Just like Chris was with Hand and Doll.
Are they a lot more expensive than our city attorneys? They may or may not.
Tut had the option to go, and they didn't want to.
Well, I don't know about that part. We did have a pre-construction meeting scheduled for Wednesday for the tank, Kevin, by the way. Two o'clock.
That'll save me from asking.
I'm sorry?
That'll save me from having to ask, huh? Again. Get it painted, brothers, get it painted.
We've been talking to people with cellphone issues, and it's a continuing issue, and believe me, that will be brought up Wednesday.
And, and again, the shame of it, it has to be done. There's no way around that. You know, I've talked to a few folks myself. It's unfortunate that there is some laps in services that they're having, but it's a, it's an unfortunate deal. It's just the way, but I gotta get that tank painted.
Well, and it's, I mean, repeated enough times to where the cellphone people know what tower heights required to provide the level of service that they want to provide their customers, and I didn't decide what temporary tower height they put their antennas on. I mean, that was not my decision, and it wasn't our decision, and they...
Well, it should be. It should be theirs.
It was theirs.
Yeah.
And, you know, and I, I didn't do the propagation study, I didn't have anything to do with that. But I'm getting a lot of phone calls because, for some reason, people think it is our fault.
Well, because he's telling people it's his fault.
Anyway, that's about all.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Peterson. All right, in no, go ahead, Richard. I was gonna say in no particular order.
And I just want to be brief, just some good news. We did get our official declaration from Hurricane Nate. It's DR 4349, so we already are assured to a 75% reimbursement on our public assistance, and the state usually waits a little later to, to chime in whether they'll do 12 and a half percent additional, and traditionally they have, so we're hoping that. We did open the bids on the five piers that were severely damaged this morning. We got a good contractor and a good price. You'll be seeing that at your next meeting. Also at your next meeting, state was a little late getting this information out. It really kind of got surprised on us at a, at a, at a MPO meeting, but we do have TAP grant coming up, that's traditionally for sidewalks. The federal has upped it to $800,000. It is a, a six, 80/20 split, so, you know, you get $800,000 worth of work for $160,000 worth of cost. And going through that, it looks like the, probably the best candidate that we're going to recommend to y'all is continuation of the sidewalks on South Section Street, all the way down to Battles, Battles to Greeno, and tie it into Greeno, and I just forgot the name of the, where we left off at Greeno. I think it's Southland Boulevard, if I, if I got it right. And we think that there's probably enough money in that grant where we can do somewhere around $100,000 to $150,000 worth of drainage improvement in there, too, to support the sidewalk, and hopefully address some of the nagging problems that are in that area. So we're, we're excited about that. At tonight's meeting, y'all are taking action on the Fairhope Alley Transit Hub project, so we'll hit the ground running as soon as the ink is dried on that resolution. We'll be able to get the request for qualifications out and start that process in the anticipation that we'll have authorization from Federal Transit in January. We're working away on the Tatumville watershed study. It's been a little slow getting started, but we're, we're starting to pick up speed there. And one of the things that I'm trying to put together for you and start introducing you to is something we can do in-house that correlates with the recommendation from the regional, original PL, as well as from the original study in 2012, is we started on Delamar with converting it to one lane, and adding striping to, to increase parking opportunities, as well as making it more pedestrian-friendly. There was a more intensive plan that involved bumpouts and the crosswalks and things of that nature. Probably the most important part was the, the, the bollards that, that were part of the architecture that could be then relocated to actually when the street closes off for First Fridays and things like that. All that work is something I think we can do in-house in, in phases, but we're going to start feeding you that information about cost and, and things of that nature and moving forward. And just as a little lobbying effort, Public Works has a general all-hands meeting every Thursday morning at seven o'clock, and this Thursday will be my 10th one I've attended. And at every one of those meetings I've had, there's been one question that was asked at every one of them, and that was about the, the Christmas one-time payment, and I know that it, that it came up and was discussed a little bit at a meeting a while back. And the one thing I, I can tell you, especially with the Public Works folks, a lot of those at $240, which may not mean a lot to you and I, it is, it's important to them, and I know that, you know, it's something that y'all discussed and everything else, but my, my commitment to, to the folks at Public Works that I would at least just share with you that it really means a lot to a lot of folks, and, and it's getting to be that time of year, and, you know, I, I hope that'd be something that y'all will be willing to discuss and take up in, in the weeks to come, because, you know, it may not mean a lot to you and I, but to some of those folks, 240 is the difference between a regular Christmas and a great Christmas.
Let me address that question, yeah. The, probably the reason it's not on tonight's agenda was that for the full-time employees, I don't see any issues with the 240. For the part-time employees, it's based on length of service, and we had, had pushback from some staff that wanted to simplify that, and I, we haven't decided on how, how we would, how or if we would simplify that for the part-time employees. There was so much $25 for one year, 50 for two, and over that it was like 100. So that's really all that's left on that. So if they're a full-time employee, I would tell them, in my opinion, don't, don't sweat it, but part-time, we just need to determine if that's going to be the same way it's been in years past, or if we're going to simplify it.
Well, I appreciate that, and I will share the good Christmas cheer with them on Thursday morning, okay? Thank you.
Richard, I got a question in regards to the sidewalks and the MPO grant. Is the Bike Ped Committee going to have any input on that sidewalk? Because they talked about it briefly in the last meeting, because a member of the POs is on the Bike Ped.
And that's really, and kind of coming in late to the game here, you know, looking for what, what that was, apparently that's been a, a goal of that MPO committee, or, excuse me, the Bike Ped Committee as well, is, is seeing that connectivity, especially with, and I'm going to butcher the names, but you have Old Battles Village, which is an ever-expanding neighborhood, as well as the new multifamily that's coming online that is, that's in, those two developments are, are very large, and they're in the city of Fairhope, but they have no sidewalk connectivity, and that was, you know, I think was their thing, was, is getting them connected, and all of a sudden you've now connected, if, if we complete that link, that you, those folks in those neighborhoods could theoretically walk to the high school, because they'll have a continuous route to Greeno and in north, as well as you connect the Twin Beach sidewalks, as well as the South Section Street sidewalks. So you're getting a, a major connectivity out of that. And it just kind of worked out that that project is about an $800,000 project, if you have a heavy emphasis on some drainage improvements to support the sidewalk, as well as address some existing problems. So I think it's a good fit. I can't think of another link in the city, and I hadn't been here long enough and hadn't studied it long enough.
Come to the Bike Ped meeting.
Well, that we could consume, the big thing with TAP grant, you don't want to leave money on the table. You want to make sure you, you know, you, because there's an economy of scales there, and, and, and there's some bureaucratic overhead that you, it makes it worth it to maximize that grant, so. But, you know, again, the good news about TAP, they have been there year after year, and I think this city has never been declined on application, have they? I think we've gotten one every year since it was introduced in 2012, so we got a, we got a good roll going, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. All right, we've got just a couple of minutes. Does anybody else, any other department heads have anything real pressing they'd like to brief us on?
Hi, Councilman Mayor, don't have anything really pressing, but I just wanted to say, after the presentation night, with all the change going on in the city of Fairhope, it's pretty tough to make a lot of these decisions, and, but it looks like that presentation was great, and change is, is something that we need to do here in the city of Fairhope, as we know from year to year, things do change. And so I do want to announce to the city council tonight my retirement from the city of Fairhope, and I'll be leaving on December the 31st, and look forward to a nice transition for whoever you bring in for the golf professional at Quill Creek. But I want to thank you all for a, a great tour, and a great run, and anything I can do to help the city in transition, please let me know. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bobby.
Thank you for your service. Okay, we got one more minute. Mr. McCrory, Mr. Corning, Mr. Rome, is he, if he's here? Okay, we'll adjourn, and we'll take about a three-minute break.